At seven o'clock. I will be taking the lead just for a little bit as we are transitioning to the new structure of the school committee, their leadership team. So because of the transition, we did have a election this, this, um, this week, well, actually last week, and we have a new member. And so I'd like to be the first to welcome Heather Morin to our school committee, um, not a stranger to Douglas politics. She, I know that we have talked a number of times in capacity on the finance committee, but we want to welcome you and um, give you an opportunity to say hello and anything you might want to share with us right off the bat, Heather?
Thank you all. Um, thank you for that nice introduction, Mr. Mainz. Um, I'm just going to give you a brief background about myself. I'm a 12-year Douglas resident. I have two children in the school system. One child is in 10th grade and she attends BBT and my other child is in the elementary school and he's in fourth grade. Um, I have served two years on the finance committee and I will continue to do that for another year and then my position will be up for reelection, which I probably will move off of, but given the circumstances with the COVID and everything else, my background is in finance and accounting. I have a bachelor's in accounting, um, and then a master's, I have an MBA. I work in the public sector for the US government, for the air force. I'm a deputy CFO for special programs. So I really think that I'm really good with budget and numbers is where I think I would be an asset to the school board. But I look forward to working with everybody and getting to know everybody better. Thank you very much.
Well, Heather, you certainly picked a fine time to join us because finance is going to be an important piece of what's going to happen in the next two years, to say the least. Alright, so there is, um, as I said, there is no student representative. Public comment is next. The school committee welcomes public comment on, on items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities. The public comment agenda item is reserved for this purpose. I don't know that we have anybody here for public comment. Okay. Well, then, and the next thing on the docket is to begin the process of the school committee reorganization. Um, as we know, Brett Argul has, has served as the chair for quite a number of years and done a fantastic job at doing so. And um, he had stepped away from the board and as such, we will need to go through the process of getting a new chair. And then, once we have a new chair, I will turn it over to the chair to continue the, the, the process of reorganization. We will need to get a new vice chair and a secretary and then also do the subcommittee. So this could take a little bit of time, but with that in mind, I guess I would start by asking if there is anyone who would like to nominate someone for the position of chair of the school committee? Did I freeze? Did I freeze again? No, okay.
Yes, you did.
Alright, we're looking for a nominee for chair of the school committee.
I nominate Lisa Brown.
I'll second that.
Lisa Brown. Okay, so Lisa, and that, that came from Becky, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And the second came from Kelly.
Yep.
Are there other nominees? Anyone else vying for the position of chair of the?
Don't all speak at once.
Hey, hearing. No, uh, hey, there he is. The form, we just missed the nice words we just said about you.
I, I heard, but I was eating, so I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, subject you to that.
So welcome. Uh, do you have any, we, we already went past public comment. I can come back if you would.
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm just applying the wall. Thank you.
Good. So, uh, we have a nomination from Becky for Lisa to be the chair and we have a second from Kelly. Do we have any other nominees? And if not, we can move on to vote.
Are you okay with it, Lisa?
Yep.
Your body language says otherwise, but.
So with that in mind, I think we probably have to do a roll call vote because we are virtual, so a roll call vote for Lisa's appointment as the chair of the school committee.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa, it's official.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Congratulations and best of luck. Um, you still have.
Me.
You have Brett's phone number, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, so I think the next thing, Lisa, is to toss it over to you for nominees for vice chair and um, go from there.
Alrighty, I'm looking for nominations for a vice chair. Can I nominate?
I don't know that you can, as chair.
Okay, so can I nominate Kelly Grady?
Second.
Ken, who, who did that come from? Was that Julie?
Thanks, Julie.
Kelly with Julie the nominee with the ocean? And I didn't, I, I didn't catch, was there a second to that?
Yeah, I seconded.
And roll call vote?
Well, are there any other, anybody else interested in the position?
Are there any other nominees?
Now roll call vote?
None.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
I'm assuming I don't vote for myself, so.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Lisa, the girl Lisa Brown. Okay, very good. And then secretary.
Is there anybody that wants it before I throw out a name?
Looking for a nomination to secretary.
Can I literally ask Lisa, you take notes and then the recording secretary, how's it go?
Um, I just take the notes, type them up and send them in when we're done with that topic completely.
Just for executive session.
Well, executive session and um, subcommittee meetings as well. And I actually have a form that I created that makes it nice and easy, lays it all out for you. And I'll be happy to send it to you.
I wasn't asking for myself.
Anybody who wants it.
I don't mind doing the secretary. I, I've done it for the finance committee, so.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll have, I'll nominate Heather Morin for secretary.
Second.
Is there anybody else who would like to nominate anyone for secretary?
I think we lost Julie again.
I could hear her even when it said she was connecting.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah, she's not there.
Oh, I'm here.
There she is.
I'm here, sorry, I had a, I had a switch. I couldn't take Dean on the phone. Maybe my audio on, let me.
Roll call vote for secretary.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Julie Mulder.
Ready?
Alright, we have a board.
Our chair is Lisa. Vice chair is Kelly and Heather is our secretary. Okay, are we ready for subcommittees?
Yeah.
So the first of the subcommittees is the policy subcommittee and presently serving in that capacity is Becky and formerly was Brett.
I'd be happy to stay on it. Unless there's other two others interested.
Would somebody like to nominate Becky?
I'll nominate Becky for a policy subcommittee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Heather? Okay. Good, we could roll call vote Becky and then look for a nomination for the second person.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. And we need a second person.
Nominate somebody or would somebody like to volunteer to that? Was it, what is it, a volunteer? Somebody else would like to serve in that committee?
I don't mind doing it, if this is Julie.
So I'll nominate Julie for policy subcommittee.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote?
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
So our policy committee now is Becky and Julie. Very good. Budget subcommittee is next, Lisa. Now you have um, you serving on the committee, Kelly is an alternate and the other member was Brett previously.
Can I nominate someone?
Whatever.
Yes. We nominate Heather Morin and I can, I'll stay on there.
Okay, I second Heather and I nominate Lisa.
And I'll second Lisa.
Alright, so. Let's start with Lisa. Who nominated her? Who nominated her?
Becky.
I nominated Lisa.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly.
Okay, roll call.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Lisa was in. We're looking for a second on the budget subcommittee.
I nominate Heather Morin.
Okay, so Lisa's gonna nominate Heather.
Second.
Becky seconds it. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Now, we have an alternate usually for that, for that position, um, presently serving in the capacity is Kelly.
That's fine. I don't mind staying on as alternate.
Would anybody like to nominate Kelly as an alternate?
I nominate Kelly as the alternate.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Becky Churniac, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
So our budget subcommittee now is, consists of Lisa, Heather, and Kelly is our alternate. Ms. Keegan, I am writing these down as best I can. I assume you're writing them down as well.
Me too. I think it's going to take the two of us, but we also have it recorded, too.
Our negotiations committee, presently, we have Kelly serving in that capacity. Brett was on that committee, so we'll need to replace, well, Brett's seat is available and Lisa was serving as the alternate to the negotiations committee. So we're looking for two members and an alternate for the negotiation committee.
Based on background and expertise, I would nominate Heather for this.
I would second.
Okay, any discussion? Heather, you're okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
You have Becky and Kelly. And it is for Heather. And we need a roll call vote for that.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Looking for a second, presently Kelly serves in that capacity and Lisa serves as the alternate.
Nominate Kelly to stay on the negotiation subcommittee.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Me, Lisa.
Lisa.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote for that, too, please.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
In, presently serving in the, as the alternate is Lisa.
I'll stay there.
I'll nominate Lisa as the alternate.
Second.
Session? Okay, we need a roll call vote to make Lisa the alternate to the negotiation committee.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
So negotiations now is made up of Heather, Kelly and Lisa will be the alternate. Very good. Signing for payroll, signing for payroll, presently serving in that capacity is Lisa and Brett. Obviously, we'll need to have two new candidates for that.
Yep, no, actually, we only need one, but Brett, well Brett was an alternate.
Alternate, I'm sorry, yeah, right.
Lisa, are you okay to continue with that? I don't want to assume.
Someone else can grab that. I do recommend you also take accounts payable because it's quick and easy at the same time, um, rather than split it up between two people. Accounts payable is usually weekly, payroll is every other week, but they can have it usually ready at the same time.
And um, if you don't mind if I introduce that yet, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to state that, um, Heather, you're new and I just wanted to let you know that even though we have one person, you know, on a master general law, they can sign for payroll payables. I always let anybody new know that at any time whatsoever, if you want to come in and look at it, um, obviously you, you can absolutely do that. Welcome to do that.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that everybody always knows that, that, you know, just because one person is signing, everybody has a right to see everyone at any time that they want to. I want to make that clear.
Yep.
So ideally, it sounds like Lisa, we're looking for a nominee for both signing payroll and accounts payable.
Yeah.
Any nominees?
Any volunteers?
Courtney, um, does it need to be during school hours? Are there, I mean, I just, I don't know what this year is going to bring.
Well, I mean, that's.
But in a different way, I don't know what this year is going to bring.
The way it's been, it doesn't, to answer your question, it doesn't have to be. No, it certainly doesn't have to be. Um, it has been for quite some time because actually we had four at home, you know, um, moms and dads, so, you know, it just worked out great, but, you know, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I could do it.
It's just the timing for me. I, I do, for the finance committee, I do sign uh, checks that need to be done over the finance committee and they have a drop box. So I know it's not ideal. I don't mind being the alternate. It's just timing wise, I don't want to hold up that somebody needs to have something signed. Um, I leave for work at five in the morning. I'm normally home around three thirty, four o'clock-ish. I just don't know how late you guys are open at school for me to come in and to sign if an alternate. And I have every other Friday off, so, but I don't know how the payroll and all that runs, so.
Yeah, so typically the payroll is an extremely short timeframe. In fact, by the time we get it done and Jean has to have it to do everything, it is done, signed, goes to, you know, it goes to Jean and then, you know, she gets, it's just a very, very tight process. Um, the town hall is closed, you know, to the, for all intents and purposes on Friday. So, you know, to be honest with you, probably hold up her payable warrants as well, but, you know, you can certainly check with Jean on that, um. But that's part of the reason, you know, we, we've kind of gone with the, the daytime because it does, it does a lot of. But, you know.
I, I can do it. I just may need some help from the alternate depending on how things go because I, my kids are too young to leave at home, so if we end up needing to be at home and I need to go in the office, I don't know that I'm going to be comfortable bringing them into the office. Just to be frank, I don't know that I'll be comfortable bringing them into the office if no other children are allowed in the building. Um, so we can do it and I think I should have the flexibility, but yeah, I might need help from the alternate.
So we will be looking for someone to nominate Becky to take on the role of lead for the signing of the payroll and accounts payable.
I'll nominate Becky.
I'll second.
Kelly and Heather.
I just wanted to ask a question. So none of this can be done electronically?
Oh, no, no, we, we don't. I don't recommend that. I mean, there may be, and I don't know for sure, there may, I actually do know just from looking at my list serve from Masbo, there are a few people doing that, but I don't think Jean, Jean would not allow that because Jean and I are like this, we think the same. And I, I really don't think it's proper. I, I would not advocate for that. Um, I, I really want, you know, the whole idea of, you know, cross steps in government is to have everything, not just the, um, you know, looking at electronically, but, you know, we are there to answer questions and also we wanted to make sure it's an original signature. So I.
Can I ask what date? I'm sorry, Courtney, I'm, can I ask what day normally you guys go in to sign? Because I, I do have flexibility. Right now I'm teleworking. I'm assuming in the fall, I'll still be teleworking probably two to three days a week. So I just, I could coordinate if I knew the date.
Okay, um, payroll is every other week on Thursday morning. It's not that way now. Now is, everything's all messed up right now. But normally Thursday morning and like I said, very tight, tight timeframe. And warrants, um, oh my God, because everything has changed. It's hard to even remember. It seems like it was like years ago and it's only been a couple of months. Um, trying to think of the time. Do you guys remember timing on payables? I know now we're doing it the same day, but it wasn't like that before. It is really based on Jean's schedule and how her review of things goes and when she needs it, but I believe I'm thinking, I don't know if Kevin, if you recall either, it was on Tuesdays typically for payable warrants? It's funny, I can't remember because everything's been so messed up.
I, I remember them mostly on Tuesdays.
Yeah, I think, I think Tuesdays for payables.
Do I go to town hall or do I go to school?
No, it's at the school department, yeah.
So what's the latest time that you guys are in the office?
Um, for, well, typically for.
Okay, so I can be the alternate. If I have to leave work early, I can get there for three thirty to be able to sign everything. So I can be the alternate if somebody will, if that makes it easier, too.
Okay, and it doesn't usually happen that often, Heather. I mean, occasionally.
I know, I just, I'm trying to find a, a way for Becky because she's got the younger kids that she can't leave at home, so.
Which, to be honest, again, I didn't know what this year was going to hold.
I know.
I should, I should still be at home going forward. Um, if they're at school, it's fine. It's no problem. It's just if they're, if knocking on my wood here.
Not knowing what the fall is going to bring. I, I have, I have flexibility with my work that they'll let me leave early. I can make up my time, so.
Well, and Becky, if, if things change and we have to revisit this, you know, if, if it just doesn't work that you can do it, we can do that.
Okay.
I also want to remind everyone, too, that this is a fairly new Mass General law that allows only one person be designated um, for payable and payroll. Keep in mind that if anything really were, were to happen, which who couldn't, it can always be signed by a majority of the school committee. So I know, I understand, three of you would have to come in, but I just want to make sure that you remember that that's also available.
Okay.
Okay.
So it looks like we have Becky as our nominee. We have a nomination from Kelly and a second from Heather. Any other discussion? So then we would be looking for a roll call vote first to appoint Becky.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky has been appointed to sign for payroll and accounts payable. Now we're looking for someone to nominate Heather as the alternate.
I nominate Heather as the alternate.
Second.
That was from who?
And then Lisa.
Discussion, any conversation, any? Okay, then a roll call?
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Might be the fastest we've ever gone through the reorganization of the school committee, so thank you all very much. I believe that was everybody that we had to uh, take care of. We'll get it all lined up and get it, get it out.
We skipped over one, actually.
Yeah.
Skipped over a superintendent.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, superintendent search committee, you're right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
God help us if we have to do another one.
Maybe it wasn't as fast as, maybe it wasn't as fast as I was hoping. So presently, we have Becky and is it Julie around it?
Oh, it was, it was Kelly, but we reorganized and.
Becky, Becky was kind enough when I was in the middle of negotiations to take that, so.
That's right, too. I forgot about that, sorry.
So is it, is it Kelly and Julie? Is that who it is on the committee?
It's Becky and Julie.
Becky and Julie.
Yeah.
Becky and Julie, okay.
And I don't mind staying on it.
So I nominate Julie for sub, superintendent search subcommittee.
Yep.
Second.
Conversation, discussion, any concerns? Alright, roll call?
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Presently.
And then I'll nominate Becky, if you're willing to stay on that.
We're halfway through. I'll stick with it.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, any conversation, discussion? I guess we would do a roll call.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing before we go. Regards to Becky, she was really good. Um, she really took a leadership role, so I just wanted to commend her for that. She really stepped up and, and moved everything forward and made everything organized. But I just wanted to put that out there, so thank you, Becky.
Thanks, Julie. You too. It's a lot of work, but I think we've, we're in good shape.
Yep. So I guess we're looking for a roll call at this point?
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Morin, aye.
Julie Mulder.
Lisa Brown, aye.
That is everything, correct?
Yep.
Are we going to do an alternate as well?
Um, we did have an alternate with Lisa was the alternate, that's correct.
Yeah, just in case, you know, you know.
That's fine. I don't mind staying there.
I'll nominate Lisa as an alternate.
I'll second.
Alright, Heather? Any discussion? Roll call.
Becky Churniac, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather and I got Kelly, okay? And Julie.
Julie Mulder.
Thank you. Okay, so Becky, Julie and Lisa. Now, I believe we got them all. And with that, Lisa, we turn a little, the meeting over to you. We're on to old business and.
Does anybody have any old business? I don't know if anybody is gonna raise a hand and I don't know if I'm going to be able to see it.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that.
Hopefully they'll just speak up. Does anybody have any new business?
I do. Excuse me. Um, if the committee would indulge, I received a letter from the Douglas Teachers Association's Leadership Committee. Today is the 21st, so it was on Tuesday and I was asked if I would read it to the committee tonight. I did send it along. I'm, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it, but I did want to read because it will have some, some some relationship to what we're going to be talking about throughout the course of the evening on the docket. So if, with your indulgence, I'll, I'll read through it for you. Okay, it says, Dear Superintendent Mainz and School Committee Members, I am writing to you in regards to the decision to reduce the stipends for the sprint coaches to 10% velocity and 5% JV, both including longevity. The Douglas Teachers Association is aware of the financial burden that the virus has created and understand the towns need to find their way to stay financially healthy during this difficult time. We ask that any and all future decisions to implement changes to the current collective branding agreement be discussed with the DTA Executive Board in advance of those decisions. We also noticed on your agenda this evening, discussion on additional stipend positions in relationship, in relation to this school closure. It is our hope that Superintendent Mainz, the administrators of the Douglas Public Schools, the school committee members, parents, students and all other Douglas residents are aware of the additional burden the pandemic has placed on teachers. None of us were prepared to deal with this, yet we accepted the challenge head on and have continued to provide quality educational opportunities to all of our students. We have discovered how to create videos of instructional lessons and set up virtual class meetings via Zoom. Our inboxes are flooded with resources that we can use to teach during this time. And while those resources are appreciated, it is a huge time commitment to review them all. We also have hundreds of emails from students and. We also have hundreds of emails from students, administrators and Superintendent Mainz. We've been communicating with, with them constantly, always putting the students' needs first to ensure they continue to receive outstanding educational opportunities and remain on track for standardized testing in future classes. We are all working harder and spending much more time on our responsibilities, both professionally, both professional and personal with our own families than we ever have before. This includes all stipend positions as well. I will not burden you with the details of what these people have done at this time, but these details can be provided if so desire, if you so desire. We ask that you please be considerate of all hardworking, all the hard work that these people are continuing to do. I'm sure that many of the jobs that people have been performing now look much different than they did just a few months ago. In this case, as I'm sure is the same with you. Different doesn't mean less. The salaries of stipends, stipend positions on Appendix C were bargained in good faith and when people were appointed to those positions, they relied on the income as part of their salaries. They, they are doing the jobs they were hired to do, although it looks different than what is traditional. I respectfully request that the committee honor what was already been agreed upon. Sincerely, Kevin Redden, Douglas Teachers Association. So I wanted to read that, um, in advance of our upcoming conversations throughout the, throughout the agenda.
Okay. Does anybody else have any new business? We'll be moving on to the superintendents report.
Very good. Thank you. And I'm gonna sort of toss it to Julie and Becky. But the first thing on the docket is sort of an update on the superintendent search, which is moving at a very brisk pace. It's going very well.
Okay, um, so our three finalists were announced this week. Uh, we've already started candidate visits to Douglas. Um, Dr. Gary Reese was today, Paul Vier will be Friday and Richard Lynn will be Tuesday. Um, these site visits, they're remote, obviously. But they've included staff and will include staff, admin, students. And we're also, hopefully people got the email that, um, the public is invited as well. So there's a Zoom link. Um, I was able to jump in for a little bit today. I'd say there are about 10 or so people there. So it's a chance to ask some questions of the candidates. If you're a parent or community member, you have some interest. Um, the school committee members are also visiting the candidates' home districts. So Ashland for Paul Vier was Wednesday, Westport with Dr. Reese is this Friday and North Brickfield is with Richard Lind on Tuesday. Um, I talked to Tracy. She has her, um, school committee meeting tonight. So that's why she couldn't be with us, but she's been very helpful. Um, we need to agree on an interview date. I was able to check in with her. So I interviewed, um, for the school committee to interview the candidates. She thinks that we can get all three interviews done in one night. So she was proposing the 28th, which is Thursday, which is next, which is next Thursday. Um, I think that if we can all do this, then it would be good because all of the visits both ways will have finished on Tuesday. That would give a chance for whatever information, um, feelings have come out of those visits to be presented to us over the course of Wednesday. We can have the interview on Thursday. And then, um, as of now, we've had the first as our selection date. So that would be Monday. That would give us, again, some time to sort of see how the interviews go on Thursday. Um, Monday, we would deliberate and vote. And then we would need executive session, I believe, um, with council to start to set parameters for negotiations. So she said that we should agree on that tonight if that works. So I guess if you can look at your calendar, see if you can block off the 28th for, um, interviews. And then also, I think the best option going forward, we could either brainstorm topics that we want to cover in the public interviews tonight. And that, or the other option, which is my preference, uh, we can email topics to her, to Tracy individually, um, to avoid online deliberation. And she can help organize that with Lisa. So after, we would interview, we would, sorry, email her topics that we think we need to bring up during the interview. And then she'll be in touch with Lisa with like, uh, sort of categorization of what we've come up with. She'll help with the questions and then sort of arranging them in a way that makes sense. Um, so I think that makes more sense than us taking up airtime now.
And what, what's the date again that we are gonna make a decision? So we'll do the interviews on Thursday and then?
The first, although I don't know that we have to be married to that. If we want to do it on Friday instead, we could do it on Friday instead. But I think, I think I prefer the option of the weekend because then, again, we have a chance for admin, staff, people of the public who have seen our interview with them. If they want to reach out for any other reason, we have a chance to kind of deliberate on that. But I'm open to moving it also if we want to.
Um, I, I would, my preference would not be Friday just simply because we have negotiations on Wednesday and then would be doing interviews on Thursday. So.
Yeah, I'm fine with Monday for the deliberation.
As far as the interviews on Thursday, would we be starting at seven o'clock again?
I don't know that for sure. I would think we would have to start earlier. Um.
They have in the past.
Right, and we did start our screening interviews right at 5:15 when we had three in a night.
Okay.
So I would think that she'd, my guess would be she'd probably shoot for that too.
If I did jump in, I, I want to say that one of my interviews was at five o'clock one.
So, yeah, I think we tried for five o'clock, but Julie was, was scrambling to make 5:15 work. So you were, you did it, but it was tough. Um, yeah, so that would be my.
Okay, I was just curious. Seven seemed kind of late if we were doing three interviews, so.
Maybe do like six or 5:30?
I don't think we have to decide on the time now, but if we can say that we're gonna block off the evening of the 28th, that's when we're gonna do the interviews, then we can do that. I don't think that there's anything, I don't understand what would be stopping us if the timing doesn't work out. If I go back and talk to Tracy and say, you know, what time are you thinking of starting? And it doesn't work out and we can't fit all three in on the Thursday, I don't know what would be stopping us from posting and having another interview on Friday if necessary or moving it to Friday if necessary, as long as we properly post it. Because she was able to coordinate the interviews for the search committee without us, you know, all coming online and agreeing to that. So.
Okay.
But is everybody free on the 28th? Did you have the evening of the 28th that we can do that for interviews?
28th is my last and only day.
Okay, perfect. So let's do it then. Um, and then we'll do the first so that Kelly's brain's not fried and give it a little bit of time. Do the first for the deliberation.
Can't promise about the brain, but it'll.
Friday is senior parade, so that's gonna be completely out.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right, so then it would be on the 20th. So then, and we can share those, um, those meetings will be posted. They will be public. We can share that Zoom meeting. I'm assuming that we will be able to stream live on YouTube. Otherwise, we're, that's it. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I can try to answer or just ask Tracy if I don't know the answer.
With regards to the three candidates, uh, three finalists, Dr. Reese is presently serving as a superintendent in Westport. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, that's right.
And Paul Vier is the assistant superintendent in Ashland.
Yes.
And Richard Lynn is the superintendent in North Brookfield.
Correct.
Just in case the people wanted to know where they were, where they were coming from. Great.
Oh, and I just want to add, um, the, the search committee was fantastic. The screening committee, they really gave a lot of time and attention and they were very thoughtful and invested in, in, you know, I just am really impressed and grateful for their work because it, they're all volunteering their time. And, um, I think it was really beneficial to have all of those voices in the process. So, thank you.
And so there were three meeting, I'm not sorry, there were four meetings today, right? Um, with, um, Dr. Reese. So there would have been students. There was, um, teachers, then there was admin. And as you mentioned, uh, public and town officials were invited to the last of the meeting. So, um, I hope everything went well there and, and you're gonna follow that same pattern tomorrow and again on Tuesday, uh, with the candidates. The only thing I don't know, and I'll reach out to Tracy, is will, will she be using the same Zoom link? Because I'll need to get that information out to, to the, to the groups tomorrow.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Um, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. All right, so the next thing I have on there is, um, we had a discussion on additional stipend positions, um, in relationship to the school closure. So there was some conversation after we, um, after the committee made the decision to modify the stipends for the spring sports as to whether or not there was gonna be any consideration to modifying any of the other stipends that might be in place. So could it be some student activity positions, um, such as a student council or something along those lines or otherwise? Uh, the, the question on, on possibility of, would there be any adjustment to the athletic director at the high school, um, stipend and, uh, the, um, student activity groups that I mentioned, uh, across the board in both buildings, from what I can gather. So that was just something that I heard, um, and wanted to put it out there for the committee to discuss. And so I guess I throw it out to you for your, your consideration and discussion.
Is there a specific? I don't know. Is there a specific stipend in mind here that's?
No, it was, um, the, as I mentioned, the, the athletic director is the only other person who would be working through the third season of the school year, uh, both the two buildings. And then the, a lot of the student activity groups run all the way through the end of the school year. So they were at a little bit of downtime. Now, that being said, it doesn't, I, I can't speak and maybe, I know Josh is here, so maybe he can chime in a little bit. But my sense is that, um, that those committees in, 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 the, the, were probably still doing some things. There wasn't, I'm sure there wasn't a lot that could be done, but there was some things. So I don't know, Josh, if you had anything that you wanted to add in there?
So I know I can speak to a couple of the clubs. For example, um, you know, NHS, she continued to process kids, um, especially the graduates and they're, um, uh, going through that process. Um, the game club did their distance and dragons. So there were some clubs that were still meeting and working. Um, you know, as for the, the athletic director in particular, um, the, the work of the athletic director, and I think Mr. Mainz, um, has probably seen this too. A lot of the work that the athletic director does is actually getting ready for the next season. So all during the spring, Mary has been scheduling soccer and, um, and, and all the, the fall sports, the, the track meets and things like that. Um, she also had to do the, the inventory on equipment, on uniforms. She had to do the ordering, uh, of stuff. We held off on it because of the budget stuff, but she did go through the process of creating all those purchase orders for the stuff that we need and doing the ordering for next year. She's done her budget. She's then done the revisions to the budget as we've kind of looked at the financial situation. And she's been a big part of the, um, the interview process for both the boys and the girls' basketball coaches. So she's really been doing a lot. And like I said, a lot of it is preparation for the next season. So it was, uh, you know, collecting stuff from the, the winter season, putting it into storage, doing the inventory, getting stuff ready for fall. So, um, you know, she has been doing a lot of the work for that stipend.
Okay, and so thank you, Josh. So two things that, that I, I would add in as well. One is just a reminder of the letter that we just received from the Douglas Teachers Association. We don't need to, this is not something that's up for a vote at this point in time. It was, uh, it's under the school committee superintendent's report, so it's for discussionary purposes. Um, I can't tell you that I did reach out to the Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium. I heard back from all, one of the schools. So, um, the, every school is paying their athletic director their stipend for the entire year. And every school is paying the student activity, um, salaries, stipends for the year, except for one school district that is, that has indicated that they, they did a paraded for some of the student, for the student activity. Um, but just some information, and then again, I, I don't mean to curtail the conversation. It really isn't about my conversation, but I wanted to put it on there for, for the purpose of having, uh, you have an opportunity to discuss that situation.
Well, I had a little bit of anecdotal interaction, well, my son did. Um, a- as far as like student council, he was talking about how they were doing elections for the next year and it was all virtual. So my understanding is, you know, that, that advisor is still doing, you know, is still active in what they're doing. I don't, I don't know if there are any positions up for a stipend. I, I think the coaches were kind of a, a separate issue because the season didn't happen and we all agreed that they, yes, had done some work, so they deserved to have something. I don't know if there's other positions where people really haven't done anything because at least through March, they were all doing the work.
Right, right.
And I know of working a lot with the sports, like Mary was already probably on next fall in January.
Yep.
Yes, she might not have had to direct the kids to the right baseball bus, but she was already doing, like, I consider the athletic director stipend full year, whether they're, they're or not, because that's different than a coach.
Totally agree. Mary worked really hard.
And I assume it's the same for any music stipend or any of the, yes, they might have had to stop quickly, but he was already, they were already prepared to do parades and.
Right.
Everything else. Um.
I think Josh is still here. Josh, you still here? Can you update us? I, I believe you guys were doing interviews for boys and girls' basketball recently as well.
Yeah, we were doing the, yep, that process is going on, the boys, it's still going on. And I think we're gonna try to do the girls' coach next week. Um, one of the kids who is on the committee for the girls' coach is also on the superintendent panel. So I don't want to overwhelm her too bad. But, um, and as for like the musical, I know that, um, you know, Mr. Ankor is still doing a lot of, they're, they're still doing as many musical things as they can. Uh, like Tiger Jam is scheduled now for September, so we're gonna do two Tiger Jams next year. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen with the musical that the students were putting together. Um, that might be the only thing where like sort of the co-mitting event didn't happen. Um, but they were with the kids, you know, every Thursday for the rest of the year. So, um, that's kind of where that stands.
And I, and I, I mean, it's obvious, I think that we'll, I don't know of any Memorial Day parades that are going on, but.
They do have, um, they're doing the cemetery.
We did that too.
Yep.
So they're still active as well then?
Yep. Uh, you know, it's very limited, but yeah, they're still doing.
I mean, these are the times. It's really hard to be, you know, in the same capacity as you would, it would be if we were back in the brick and mortar and doing our, doing our thing, but.
Is there, is there a way to get a list of the stipends that have been affected by, no, third?
Yeah, I can put something together for you from the high school. And then, you know, Brian, I'm sure can do the middle school, right, Kevin?
Right, yeah, so the, are you talking about athletics?
No, any.
Okay.
Council, any that were affected or?
Okay. Um, but again, this, no vote is necessary at this point in time, but I would, I will put it back on the agenda as to whether or not there's any consideration for making any adjustments on June 4th. Um, and I, again, I'm not trying to cut off the conversation. Good?
Anyone else?
Okay, and then the last thing that I have is an update on the class of 2020, our seniors. If I can, before Mr. Ramato jumps in, if I could just jump in real quickly. We did get some information right before I left the office today around 4:30 from the DESE on, on graduation criteria, protocols and procedures and so forth. But also. But also, um, I would like to acknowledge the, the video that the class of 2020 sent out. I am a sensitive guy, so I did get a little misty, but it was a, um, it was really well done. I did have opportunity to um, send a video out to the, all the students uh, last week. And specifically addressing at the end, the class of 2020. And I did send an email along to uh, all the members of the class of 2020, following the video, just to express my um, appreciation and express how wonderful I think they are as a class. But update, Josh, 2020.
Sure, um, so we have, uh, we'll be doing our, we'll be collecting our materials next week. Um, it's all gonna be outside. Basically, the kids will bring their books, their materials, whatever they have, will do an inventory, put in a bag, put it aside where it can sit for two weeks to um, and be sanitized by the um, custodial crew. They'll also turn in their Chromebook to Donna, who I don't believe will be spraying them down with anything, but put aside to decontaminate. They'll pick up their caps and gowns, uh, caps and gowns are in, uh, stalls are in, the whole deal. And um, they, they can pay their class dues, they can pick up the stuff from their lockers. The secretaries actually went through and just cleaned out the seniors' lockers, put the stuff in bags with their names on them, rather than have kids coming into the building. We thought that was a good way to minimize um, exposure to the building and also to kind of get the process over a lot faster. So they can literally just come up, drop off their stuff, here's your stuff, see you on Friday. Cause Friday is the senior parade, motorcade. In lieu of the actual graduation, we'll be doing um, the, a motorcade parade to celebrate instead. I sent out the route today. Douglas PD is helping out, Douglas Fire is gonna be there. They are going to record it with the drone. Uh, it's gonna start at the high school, it's gonna come back to the high school. And when they come back, we're gonna space the kids out, space cars out in the parking lot. And do an abbreviated version of um, class night. So it might not be the full thing, um, we're only leaving out a couple of things though, like yearbook dedication and um. There's something else we were leaving out too, but most of that program is going to be there. Those other pieces we're gonna do um, when we eventually do a graduation ceremony. So I do wanna strongly encourage the parents of seniors to drive their student in the parade. Other towns have been doing these motorcades and they've had a few fender benders because the students waving, looking for their, their friends and neighbors and family. And they don't notice the car in front of them has stopped. So the, the pace is gonna be really slow, but um, it, it would still probably be in the interest of safety to have um, a parent drive. So the student can wave and, and not be distracted. Uh, they'll wear gowns, they won't wear their headcaps typically, they don't wear their caps in senior, on um, that senior night. This way it doesn't fall out the window when they're waving out the window or something too, so keeps things a little bit safer. We'll hand out our scholarships and we'll hand out most of our awards that night too. Um, I have a friend who's gonna do sound, um, that should work out. And um, Celebration Graduation is gonna be there to hand every student uh, a nice gift bag that they put together. And really, a lot of thanks to Celebration Graduation for the idea and work that they did to put it together. Douglas PD, the Douglas Fire, um, DPW, everybody who's um, stepping up to try to make this event happen for the kids. It's really been great to see um, how the community has come together to put this together. So it's been, it's been a fantastic thing.
Josh, could I ask that you remind um, all the students that this is not the Rose Bowl Parade of 1965? Where you can sit on top of the car and wave, they should remain in the car?
Yep.
All limbs in the car as well, please?
Yes, definitely.
I, I was happened to see one last night of a young man who got really excited because he saw this teacher that really helped him to get through. And he went through the sky, the sky window, climbed out of the car, jumped out of the car while the car was moving to go over and, 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 and uh, give her a hug and so forth. We wanna try to stay away from that, there's a liability concern there.
Well, yeah, and you don't want the hugging with COVID, so there's a lot of sticky flags there. We will wrap the, when, when students arrive, we'd like students to start arriving at 4:30 so we can make sure they're lined up. We're just gonna bring them in and we're gonna line them up, kind of the, as you're coming up the hill, past the field, to take that first right. And loop all the way around so that we can just come back down again. So um, that works great when we do the um, for final exam and midterm exams, when a lot of parents come to pick up their kids. We can, we can fit a lot of cars around there, so uh, and then just stay behind the car in front of you. Who's gonna be staying behind the Douglas PD officer in front of you. I believe Finn will be part of this uh, event as well. So, you know, I am really excited about that. Uh, as far as the rest of the events, I need to, to take some more time to look over the um, guidance that came out from the state. It was pretty, it's pretty detailed. I did, I, I looked through it, it, but there's a lot of details and a lot to um, kind of digest with it. So um, but I, I think that we can get some, um, I'm sorry, I'm distracted. I'm on this call and I'm on, my grad class is meeting tonight. Yeah, actually for the first meeting, because that's when you make your impression. But so I, I think we need to do a little more looking at the, the rest of the guidelines that will come out regarding um, that. Because I know like the, the guidance that's in there, we wouldn't be able to do a senior picnic at all. You know, there, there might be some other constraints. And then um, you know, just kind of look and make sure that this is still um, the direction that we wanna go in. But I, I'm pretty optimistic and, and just a, a note on that video. So I uh, we did send it into, I think WCBB, and I don't know if they showed it. Ms. Brown, did you, did you see if they had shown the video on, on TV?
Not seen that, no.
Okay, um, but I did post it to uh, to my Facebook because, you know, I'm, I'm a middle-aged man, so I have Facebook. And I had posted the, a comment, yo, best class ever. And my class advisor from 1991 actually chimed in and said, better than the class of 1991, to which I said, well, certainly more resilient. Because these kids have really proven themselves to be uh, pretty fantastic in light of um, really getting shortchanged on their senior year. So if you haven't seen that video yet, uh, it's on my blog and uh, bring, bring a box of Kleenex, cause it's, it's, it's pretty moving.
And I think Dawn has it posted on the website as well.
Yep, yep.
One thing that I wanted to add in there is that the, the guidance that came out today said that um, outdoor graduations could happen with all, all the limitations that Josh just mentioned. After July 19th. So there are no, and, and it cannot be a, you know, a traditional uh, graduation indoors. Which I think also probably Josh is, is gonna probably put a real crimp on the possibility of, of prom.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be impossible, nobody's gonna give us the green light to go ahead and, and, and put 300 kids in, and, and, and out of you, social distance and dance. Which personally, it would, it would be the best prom ever, because you wouldn't have to worry about the dancing that was going on. Cause they have to be six feet apart and that would really make it great. But I just don't know that that's, that's, that's gonna be a, a possibility, given all the limitations that are there.
Yep.
So, so you could consider, I know you put down somewhere in August for the graduation, it could be a little bit earlier if you, if you would, if you want as well.
Yep, yep, so I, I think um, you know, we're, I'm pretty optimistic, I guess, about, about things. And, and this class has just been, and their parents, everybody's just been fantastic about, you know, kind of recognizing um, the, the challenges that have been inherent to this. And speaking of which, actually, if I can just say it really, really quickly, the Disney checks, the last I had heard, the refund from the Disney check was coming through. From there, it has to be kind of divided up to each um, student, a check issued to each student. So there's a little bit of a process there, but we'll get those out as soon as we can. I, I don't, the, the process was held up at some point beyond the travel agent. I don't remember if it was Disney or JetBlue or someplace along the way that was really holding up and dragging their feet on the discounts. But uh, I believe the check was sent out, so I'll double check on that.
And, and one other thing that I, I did have opportunity, it really looks sort of quickly, like you mentioned, Josh, on the regulations. They did state that it would be student and immediate families only. So there wouldn't be the opportunity to bring you this, a really, really, I mean, like last year was, I think 1,300, we put 1,300 chairs out and we filled them up. And there were people standing on the outside, so.
Yeah.
It won't be that big and, and we will have to space them out.
Yep.
Alright, anything else there, Josh?
Uh, no, uh, but I do, you know, I appreciate everything that Celebration Graduation especially has done. It's been awesome working with them and I don't know why I didn't work with them the last two years, it just, so I'm really glad to have um, them helping out.
That wasn't there.
But Mrs. Hayes was, and, and you know, honestly, I, I was thinking about it, Mr. Main.
A little ago, we were there.
If it, if it has to be an outdoor graduation, no matter what, that means that Mrs. Hayes will actually get to attend a Douglas High School outdoor graduation.
Graduation, that would be, that would be most excellent, I'm sure she'd be most ecstatic.
My, my prediction is five days of rain before we can actually, five, you know, days delayed because of rain.
Have a rain date, please.
We're gonna have to have five, I think, with a Hayes graduating, but we'll, we'll manage.
Very good, and that was everything I had, Lisa, for superintendent's report.
Alrighty, so we will move on to the school committee and subcommittee report, which is accounts payable, which is me. So on May 6th, I sent, 2020, I signed four batches, totaling 92,728 and 72 cents. And on May 14th, 2020, three batches totaling 50,979 dollars and two cents and nothing unusual. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have meeting minutes for May 7th, 2020, which I did not see any issue with.
I don't have any problems.
Courtney, can I have something? Yeah, I do have an amendment. On the page three at the bottom, um, it's actually the area under where it says available grants. It said the state has passed a bill regarding master in law, chapter 41, section 56, et cetera. It was actually, I said the Senate, the Senate had passed a bill regarding master in law, chapter 41, section 56, for services rendered and goods received. So not good receipt, but goods received.
Okay.
And I did also um, say that um, it was then in the House waiting to be voted on and that the governor was in favor of the bill um, as well.
Yep, it's immediately.
Will I be looking for, anybody else see anything?
So I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of May 7th, 2020 as amended.
All in favor?
Uh, do we need to roll call for this too?
Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Okay. Moving on to FY 2021 administrative and non-union salary wage increases.
What, are you gonna take that?
Yep, so I prepared for you the administrative positions, that's on page one. And then all of these subsequent pages are our paraprofessionals, um, ABA therapist, um, secretarial business office, bookkeeper, secretarial full year, secretarial clerk, school year. Our network technician, technology data specialist. Um, in addition, we have hourly rates for tutors, substitutes in various categories, including secretaries, paraprofessionals and ABA therapist substitutes, nurse subs. And on the last page, we have um, pay categories um, for our um, summer school. So basically uh, all of the recommendations for FY 21 salaries and hourly rates for all the categories listed therein are at zero percent. Um, superintendent salary is obviously to be determined by the school committee, um, but other than that, everything is zero percent. So remains the same uh, rates and salaries as FY 20. But certainly the um, categories that have steps, um, as some do, as you can see here, there are categories that have um, up to three steps, steps one, two and three. They will receive their steps, but zero COLA in FY 21, if the school committee um, supports the recommendation. Does anyone have any questions?
This is based largely in the uh, what's been coming out of negotiations with the DTA, or is this?
Oh, no, 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 this is because of the financial, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Courtney, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, this is, this is, this is, this is uh, 100% due to the financial situation that we're going into in FY 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Now Courtney, do we need a vote?
Oh, yes. And as you know, and just um, Heather, so I bring this forward um, every year to the school committee, all of the administration and all the hourly rates. It's typically part of our budget process. Certainly, this wasn't what we originally anticipated for the FY 21 budget. But given the um, extraordinary changes due to the coronavirus, uh, this is the recommendation we're making at this time. Along with, and you will be seeing um, next week when we have a budget subcommittee, you know, on June 4th for the public hearing for the FY 21 budget. That the um, school administration has worked the last several weeks to make numerous cuts to our original budget, um, again, for the same reason. So this is part of that whole um, thing, because 84% of our, our school budget is um, for salaries for all staff.
And we just leave the superintendent one empty for now?
Uh, yes, it has to be determined, because that is determined by the school committee. In other words, if the incumbent um, was staying in that position, it would be the same, it would be zero percent.
What document are you, are you working off of? I think I'm looking at the long thing.
It's um, the one that I uh, that we do every year for, the first one says administrative positions, um, Lauren had sent it out.
Oh, so it's definitely not these three class?
No, no, four pages of salaries and hourly rates.
Do they all have to be voted on individually? The, it can be one?
Administrative categories, um, and then you, if you want, you can say hourly categories as delineated, um. You know, for the May 24th, May 21st, school committee. For all um, hourly staff, we can list the hourly staff categories if you like. Just because it is, it's non-union, so it's all the hourly rate, non-union staff and administrative positions. So in addition to this, the only other things that we have certainly are DTA, um, contract, the custodians, and then the cafeteria workers. Those are our union contracts.
Okay, so based on what I'm reading, it's just saying that everything's staying as is for right now.
Yeah, well, not, not as is, just to be clear, it's zero percent COLA, but they will receive their steps.
Right. Now, what happens if things change when we get a budget approved? Are we locked into this?
Um, well, we don't, we certainly don't expect things to get better. You know, I, I can't see that anything's going to get better. You assume, are you thinking that things might get better, Julie, or?
You're thinking worse.
No. There's no, yeah, I mean, I would love to think so, but there are, there are absolutely zero indications nationwide and particularly statewide, which is what we're concerned with. Regarding to state revenues, uh, the town side, and I know the town is looking at, at, at similar things as well.
Okay, so this, this would kind of form the foundation of everything else. Because based on this information, this is how we're gonna base how many teachers we can have, cuts we have to make, programs we have to cut, right?
That's exactly correct. Um, basically, the budget that I, we have been working on, um, that we will be presenting to the subcommittee next week. And then for our public hearing on the 4th, is basically assuming this. Because we knew for the, we've known for the past several weeks and also had discussions with, with all units at this time. That we're going into a very bad financial position. And the um, as I said, 84% of the budget is staff related. So the more, you know, the whole idea right now is to maintain our current staff, keep as many teachers and other very necessary personnel in front of our students. And taking care of our buildings and running all of our programs. So this was really why we, we are making the recommendation at this time. It's maintaining jobs to the extent possible. I'm not saying that, that we, I don't believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Maines, that we can state at this time that there will be no loss of positions. Because it's a very unprecedented situation that we're going into. So we're trying to maintain as many, as much staff as we can and keep teachers and other very important employees in our school district and in front of our students. And maintain as many programs as we can.
Correct, correct. Correct, correct, yep.
And one more thing, you said, sorry, you said that school committee meeting is next week. It's actually not next week, it's the week after, for the budget.
No, I said that the, this is the budget subcommittee I'm talking about.
Subcommittee.
Budget subcommit, yes. Yeah, we'll plan any one of those for next week, and then, you're correct, Julie, the following week will be the, the budget public hearing on June 4th.
And if I could just jump in real quickly, two things really. The first is that we've been working, the admin team has gotten together. I, I've lost track of how many times, making some original cuts, when we came to the realization that things were gonna be a little different, making some additional cuts. And now at the point where we are looking at worst-case scenarios and trying to be prepared should we ever get to that, that point. But Courtney's point is well taken. Our goal is to try to keep everyone that we can gainfully employed. But that may not be a reality for this year. It might, might be pretty difficult for us to do so. But that being said, I did wanna recognize the, the work of the admin team, A, in, in the budget process. And as Courtney said, we will present that on June 4th. But also to point out that the administrative team took the lead, and as agreed, to accept the zero percent COLA for next year as a, as a statement of understanding how dire and grave the situation presently is going into the 2020, 21 school year. So I wanted to acknowledge them for that.
Anybody like to take a stab at the motion?
Oh, I'll give it a shot.
Did you want me to, to, to make one for you, kind of, or?
Absolutely.
Either way, okay. If you would like to make a motion to accept the FY 2021 recommended salary schedule for administrative positions at zero percent COLA, and other non-union hourly staff at zero percent COLA, and substitute positions at zero percent COLA for the Douglas School District.
So moved.
Motion by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Julie. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. On the FY 2020 preschool tuition, March, April, May, June.
Courtney, you taking this one as well, or?
I'm sure. Kevin and Cindy and I had spoken several times regarding the preschool tuitions. And I know that Mrs. Osha spoke last school committee meeting regarding this as well. So after several times, the three of us meeting and discussing it, we came up with a recommendation to leave March tuitions as is, to April tuition, preschool tuition to be fifty percent, May tuition to be fifty percent, and June tuition to be fifteen percent. Cindy can certainly talk again, if you'd like, regarding what the preschool teachers and other staff members have been doing for our preschoolers. Cindy, I believe, did know at the last meeting that she has received phone calls, actually asking about the tuitions. In other words, parents wanting to pay because they were receiving services. That being said, we certainly, a lot of this, just to reiterate and again, for you as well, Heather, the preschool program at the primary school is funded by three funding sources, general fund, the revolving fund, and also grant funding. But the majority of it is the revolving fund. If we were to make these adjustments as delineated, if everyone paid with regard to that recommendation, we should be receiving approximately ten thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Well, I guess that doesn't sound too approximate. But I don't know how to be approximate. But that would be the meaning to our, our revolving fund fee revenue if that were to take place.
I wonder, Cindy, do you wanna provide some feedback a little bit?
Yeah, there was only one parent that really expressed concern about being able to make any payments, to the point where she said, "I'm not going to access the lessons on Google Classroom." And I said, "Nothing's been decided. Please access them. We're not going to say, 'Oh, you use them, so you have to pay.'" She also asked if there would be any kind of a waiver, or could her payments be extended out further, so that they'd be smaller amounts? So that's the only parent I had heard from. A lot of parents were asking, like Courtney said, to pay, and what should we do about tuition? And at that point, we didn't know what was happening, so I just kept saying, "Hold on, hold on, you know, we'll get back to you." Ninety-nine percent of the kids have accessed the lessons, the activities, and so on. A couple of them even borrowed iPads that we made arrangements so that they had those at home. So they, they have been following the curriculum and enjoying it. I've had positive feedback from parents, and Becky has a child in preschool, so I'm sure she can comment on that as well. So, I mean, we'll do whatever. I just, we'll need some time to get letters out, and, and what would we like to do for a deadline, things like that.
Yeah, the deadline, we really want to be by, at the latest, June 30th. And I'd say, because it has to be revenue received this fiscal year, it's not going to, you know, we'll be leaving the fiscal year in more of a deficit than otherwise would be. I don't mean deficit literally necessarily. I just mean, you know, less amount there, and it will definitely affect our FY 21 and going forward as well. So, and it also affects my, if we did end up in a deficit, although I think I've, I've addressed the issues thus far, as you'll see later on this evening, some extent, then I have to make it whole by the general fund, or school choice or something, and do reclasses, so.
I, I'm wondering, a couple of things. I'm wondering if parents who haven't reached out would now reach out, because they haven't been getting a bill. And then we're gonna say, okay, so then, we're halfway through, we're more than halfway through May. So they would owe basically a month's payment now, and then in June, fifteen percent? I don't think it's too bad. I have heard some other opinions that it's not great to retroactively charge for services, but I also know that this is crazy time. And again, like, I, I, yes, my, my child is enjoying the curriculum. She's very upset with me because she's finishing up letter U, and everybody else is on X, because I'm, yeah, didn't get to it. So I don't know. I'm, I'm a little torn in terms of the timing, too. Like, I hadn't really thought about it being due by June 30th. In my mind, I had thought, well, maybe if we push it out farther, so that if we're gonna start asking for payments now, then people could kind of pace it through, like, throughout the summer, that period of time that we're asking for. I don't know.
As far as billing goes, I mean, I could certainly, because it just, it's never happened. I mean, typically, the municipal finance mantra is always, you know, it has to be received by June 30th, revenue by June 30th. But I, I could definitely look into that. But also, to give you an idea, so say if someone had a tuition, monthly tuition of six hundred dollars per month, but that would be typically eighteen hundred dollars, it would now be six hundred and ninety, just to kind of give a gauge.
No, I think that's helpful. I think just for a lot of people, the money that, you know, the months that have passed, that money is spent. And cir, like, circumstances may have changed. In the meantime, they may have figured, like, okay, maybe I'm laid off, but I'm not getting a bill anyway, so we might as well use the materials. I don't know. I think it's worth paying. I'm, I'm a little concerned about what to do for those people who may also come out and say, "I can't, I can't now. I can't anymore." And what do we do about that?
I echo Becky's sentiments as well. It's like, we need to have some sort of way forward for those that are gangfully unemployed right now, and don't know, but we still wanna keep the kids enrolled in preschool. So is there an exception policy that we can put in place? Because we want the kids to get the services, because it is a benefit to the district as they go forward into kindergarten. They have that foundation, and I know the preschool program is a great asset.
I would also add to that, just occurring to me now, because people have reached out to you wanting to pay, there may, the flip side is that there may be families who are willing to pay the full tuition for the full months. And so I, I honestly feel like you could put this out as a recommendation, but those families who want, want to, I don't know if this is allowed, but if they want to pay the full amount, and I think there will be many, that they do, and then for those that are on the flip side that are having a hard time, have an option. And then you may sort of even out to where, if this was truly required of every single family, you're gonna end up around the same spot. You can't predict the exact number, but I don't know.
I don't know. Typically, for governmental policy, you wouldn't want something like that. I mean, typically, you want to have a, an actual process, procedure, policy. Currently, what we have for all fees in Douglas is if they are eligible for free and reduced lunch, that is considered as part of the, the waiver process currently. Certainly, I do know some districts, and actually, I've thought of this for many years, but we just haven't gotten to it. It's something that maybe the policy subcommittee can talk about, you know, going forward, is maybe having a more robust, sort of, for lack of better, better words, financial assistance policy, a form, you know, proof of, you know, they have to provide some proof. I had that actually in a prior school district. I would actually prefer that rather than what we have right now. But we're kind of, I mean, we didn't think this was gonna come up, and we've been dealing with so, so many things. And like, like Cindy said, just one of a million things that we've been dealing with that we just didn't get to. Because this just started happening in March, mid-March, you know, and we've been, I know you guys all know this, but. Trying to think if there's a way that. Because we don't have a school committee coming up until June 4th, and then we're running out of more time, right?
And we have a total of fifty-five students that we're talking about, and eleven of them have paid in full for the year.
Right. Oh, yeah, we would deal with that. That's a separate.
So that's separate, right.
Treated fairly, yeah, absolute equity. We would, we would do the calculations on April, May, and June, and we would be issuing refunds for any.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. We have that all figured out anyway, but just so that the committee knows how many people we're really talking about here.
So what Becky was asking is if there's a way that we can ask people if they'd rather not have a refund? Is that what you were kind of asking?
Well, but that wouldn't.
No, that's not what I meant. What I meant was, go ahead and propose this, you know, like, send out a letter to all these families, what's been proposed, the fifty percent April, the fifty percent May, fifteen percent June. If you're in a case of hardship, there's some path to deal with that. And then if you would opt, prefer to opt to pay, because again, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job. The kids are missing out on some of the social time, but they, they post their pictures on ClassZoom, there's little videos. Like, my, my daughter can say, like, "Oh, look, it's so-and-so," and like, "Oh, I love that green planet she made." It is very active. So the service is definitely worthwhile. I think some families would, even if you sent this to them, would say, "Okay, but I'm gonna pay the whole thing." But I don't know.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. So we're giving parents the opportunity to pay the whole thing, rather than have a reduced rate.
That's what I was suggesting, but it sounds like that's not an option.
Yeah, well, we really should, anybody, let's put it this way, anybody can donate to Douglas Public Schools via a process. In other words, they can have a letter on letterhead saying, "This is, please accept this donation," and if we accept it as well. And this is what you must, you know, spend those monies on. But is any kind of a fee type of program, it's a school committee that sets the fees. You know, and they really need to be set fees, otherwise you're going down a really slippery slope, really, to be honest with you. But I do understand your point regarding a waiver program, and I'm trying to, on the fly, think of if there's something we can come up with this evening to agree with. Part of the problem is, is that, yes, there are many people that are unemployed, but there are also benefits out there, not only just the typical local benefits, but also federal as well. You know, so, and that's, that's unprecedented, too, as far as how that's been dealt with. So it's kind of difficult to try to come up with something, you know, on the fly with regard to a different waiver program. The thing that I had in mind was going, that, that I know, I kind of looked at Lexington's model. It's very robust, kind of an, you know, not extremely robust, but a good application process, review process, requires documentation. Because the whole idea is you want everybody to be treated fairly. I mean, particularly in anything governmental.
So it sounds like going forward, that's a policy that we need to look into.
Going forward, but I'm trying to think of.
But right now, what we need to do is get something out to the parents of the preschool. And, and I understand the reluctance to bill for past months, but at the same time, people who enrolled their kids in the preschool, you know, granted, it's been years since mine were there, but you know, you go in with the expectation that you're paying. Yes, some things have happened, and there may be some specific cases. But until we hear from those cases, I don't think there's anything we can do. And in the meantime, I, I do think we should get something out that says, okay, you know, fifty percent, fifty percent, fifteen, if that's what's decided, and, and get the ball rolling on that.
I have to agree with that.
If, if we, if Cindy starts getting all these calls and letters saying, "I can't pay," then obviously, we need to address that. But, you know, as Heather said, we want the kids to get the services, we want them to access the lessons. They have been accessing the lessons, so I, I think there is an expectation that if you're using the service, you know, there is some amount that you're going to pay, and if you can't, then we need to look at that, whether it's the policy subcommittee, or however we wanna go about that.
Can we put a note on the box saying if you would like to donate to pay the full amount? I'm just wondering, to Becky's thing again, if there are parents that really wanna help support and offset the other parents that really can't, or not?
No, we just wanna, we don't wanna mix up a preschool tuition fee with a donation. All, what I meant by that is if somebody separate from the preschool tuition wanted to make a donation separately, that's a different thing. It has to be something separate. We can't have any confusion between a school committee approved fee and a fee program in making a donation. And they would also have to state what that donation could be spent on as well. It's a whole different process under master in all law.
So the point would be that there's two separate things that they would have to do.
Right.
Would have to pay the fee, and then write a separate check that would be a donation to.
Correct, with the backup documentation regarding expenditure.
It would accomplish what you're saying, Julie.
Right.
Be a two-step process, rather.
Right.
Cindy, did you say that around ninety-eight percent of the kids are participating?
Yes, all but one, actually.
I think it's pretty fair to just move along with the asking for a little bit of payment. And let the parents know. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'm not sure how to make this motion, so.
Okay, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, if the school committee would so desire, we make, we make the recommendation that for the 2019, 2020 school year, that preschool tuitions be the following, due to the coronavirus epidemic. To leave March at the same monthly rate, April tuition would be fifty percent of the preschool rate, May would be fifty percent of the preschool rate, and June would be fifteen percent of the preschool rate.
So moved.
Motion by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Julie. Need a question?
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that it indicates that it's only for the nineteen, twenty school year. In other words, we're not changing the structure, so just the nineteen, twenty.
Yep, I said that in the beginning. Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. And moving onward to the approval to post the FY 2021 budget to the school department website for the June 4th budget public hearing.
Okay, the reason that I put this on is I did review the master in law pertaining to the public hearing required for the school department budget, and it's just, it may not be necessary, but again, unprecedented. be necessary, but again, unprecedented times, I just want to make sure we covered ourselves and just made sure that we did vote that we are approving to post the FY 21 budget to the website for the public hearing so that the public can access it there. What we, the law requires that you print out copies of the budget for your in-person public hearing. Obviously, that is not, we cannot do that, so that's the reason that I put this on the agenda.
And Courtney, that would be made available on June 4th?
Oh, before that. Uh huh, correct. And I'd like to get it up a little, a little bit before that.
Okay.
I'm hoping to.
Anyone have any questions? We need to vote on that?
Yes, please.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to post the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget to the school department website for the June 4th budget public hearing.
Right.
Second.
Motion by Julie, second by.
I think Becky and I were tied.
Kelly, though.
Kelly can have it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. Now we're moving on to the MCAS stipends adjustment.
Now, I put this on the agenda only again because of the situation that we have. To be honest with you, after I put it on, it wasn't at all clear that I really needed to. I believe, and John, I believe it was since you've been here and maybe before, but I believe we've had the situation before where if they do not do, for whatever reason, need to do all the classes, we would always just automatically prorate. But because everything has become complicated, I just kind of automatically put this on there, so. You know, so John did prepare the, and it's in an email form that was sent to you, regarding the ELA and math and science M-class, MCAS classes that were conducted at the elementary school, and the number of classes they taught out of the 10 classes. And so their usual amount of 776 was just prorated, and we have done that in the past. And I remembered afterwards, I, we never needed to bring that to the school committee because we would only pay for classes actually conducted, so, again, things are just so confusing these days, so.
There have been instances where sessions didn't get held, something happened, and the teacher wasn't available, or something along those lines, and so forth. So I know that that has happened in the past, but probably good practice at this point.
Yeah, because of everything else we're doing.
So you do need a vote?
Well, yeah, it's on there now, so it's, you know. Like I said, every single thing we go to do lately has become a complication. Nothing is simple anymore, so you kind of get on a roll with that, so.
So I'm looking for a motion.
And that's just to approve the.
The MCAS stipends as delineated to pay for classes taught for Douglas Elementary School, MCAS for ELA, math, and science.
So moved.
Motion.
By Julie.
By Kelly. Any discussion? The nun, roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Okay.
We're moving on to the school business operations manager's report.
Because I thought I already given my report. Kind of feels like it.
No.
So this evening, I have for you transfers and reclassifications that were sent to you. Lauren had sent them along to you with regard to the transfers, transfers number five. These were just four transfers that were requested by administrators.
Transfers.
Didn't know if there were any questions? Heather, for your information, I don't know if you've seen any of these before, but in Douglas, all municipalities and school districts are different, but here we do do line-to-line transfers, just so you know. And between funds as well, of course.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion for the FY 2020 budgetary transfers number five, school committee meeting, May 21st, 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Kelly, second.
Second.
By Becky. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Sorry, Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also, I have for you this evening a reclassification. And I don't know if you recall, but during, I know there's a pre-COVID world and the post-COVID world, I know it seems like ages ago, but throughout the FY 20 budget, we kind of did something a little bit differently this year. Anything that we added on, particularly new positions, where in the past, we would state definitively it was to be funded by school choice, but we did change our language a little bit this year due to, again, you know, budgetary issues, that we basically said, "School choice or general fund," if funds were available. We had some kind of a language like that. So as you know, we did start off with school choice for a number of positions. And so I am reclassing from school choice into the general fund. The first one, I am taking a look at preschool, again, part of it because of the funding situation, and also, some of this is also trying to set us up a little bit better for FY 21, because you know about the whole closing out the fiscal year for one fiscal year and going into another with regard to utilization of school choice and balancing out circuit breaker, school choice, preschool, and athletic accounts predominantly, but the predominant ones, of course, being the school choice and circuit breaker. So basically, that's what I'm doing here. I do want to also let you know that, I do know that I, last school committee meeting, I did present to you the general fund budget, and, but subsequent to that meeting, Ellen had let me know that there were some positions that she could actually disencumber some funds, so that made a little bit, some more available, so that we could actually put more over to general fund. And again, I want to remind you that we did utilize school choice far more than we did in the past. We do expect school choice to go down, both, it is actually starting to go down and going down further in subsequent years with regard to revenue for school choice. So I'm not only looking at FY 20 and 21, but also prospectively going forward, so trying to set us up a little bit better with regard to that account as well. That was a long-winded explanation for a couple of reclasses, but I'm also trying to explain a little bit more about what's going on with budgets, so FY 20 and 21. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion for FY 2020 reclassification number six, school committee meeting, May 21st, 2020.
So moved.
Motion from Becky.
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Julie Mulder.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing I have to let you know about is, so maybe it's been a few meetings since I've mentioned this, but we are still holding some sped tuition bills for private day schools and also transportation bills because of the whole Chapter 41, Section 56, waiting for that legislation to come through. You know, it doesn't, the transportation is all of them, the times that services weren't rendered. And the tuition, there's some, there's this DESE in OSD and Department of Revenue, and hopefully, that legislation will pass very soon, and I'm just hoping that it's very simple legislation that we can, we can just get everything taken care of. With regard to the sped tuitions, that also, you know, it comes, it's what determines also our circuit breaker tuition as well, so that's something very important. In fact, yesterday, we did, Mr. Mainz, Mrs. Urquhart and I all signed a letter that they were doing statewide to the Commission of DESE and also OSD with regard to that same issue as well in support of moving forward so that we can get these invoices paid as well. As I said, everything's a little bit more complicated. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any topics not anticipated? Is that good? Is there any need for executive session? Yes, Courtney?
You saw that, huh? Okay. I did just think of something. Lisa, with virtual, you can't sign my originals for me and Jean, so if you could anytime next week, or I'll have them ready for you when you come in, or will that be you coming in next week, or no?
I can't, I can't, just, you know, when.
Oh, yes, because you have to sign those, even if you're not on payable, right, you will have to sign those. So actually, anytime that's convenient for you, just shoot me a text, and that would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
I know we all want to go home, but I had a question asked of me that I'm going to ask now because maybe Mr. Mainz can answer this for me. The track has been closed. Is the track under the school committee? Is that, the Department of Health closed it? What's, what's the status of that as far as the summer goes?
So, well, that's, that's an interesting question, because it looks like now that we're, as we're reopening some things, I don't have any information that indicated that playgrounds and so forth have been reopened as of yet. My sense is that in phase two, which would be a couple of weeks away, my, that would be, my expectation is that there would be some sort of indication in that phase that playgrounds and so forth would be, would be, could partially be opened up again. And so the track is, was in the same context as the playground. We shut everything down so that people couldn't congregate and so forth. So my sense is that it will remain closed until we get some sort of an update from the state that indicates that it's okay to, once again, reopen the track.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so our next meeting will probably be the next Thursday?
Two weeks, June 4th, right?
Oh, no, the school committee, their superintendent one, I think.
Interviewed, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the 28th.
Those all have to be posted and everything ahead of time, the two days ahead?
Yes, we will do that. Oh, I just want to confirm time with Tracy to make sure that, and with the candidates, to make sure that we can fit all three in that night, and as soon as we have that time shored up, then I can pass that on to Lauren, who's been really helpful with hosting meetings for us.
That'll be the 28th, the first, and then the fourth.
Yes.
The budget open public hearing. Okay, sounds good to me. Anything else? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
At 8:44.
I move to adjourn at 8:44.
Motion by Becky.
Second.
Second by Kelly.
Wasn't me.
Heather.
Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you all for being patient.
Nice job, Lisa.
Congratulations, Madam Chairwoman. Donna, thank you very much, Donna, as well, for helping out with the Zoom broadcast as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all.